2017 regular city council meeting of the city of Kenmore. And I call the meeting to order. Uh, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Excuse.
Councilmember Danuski.
Here.
Councilwoman Herbig.
Here.
Councilwoman Sperry.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness.
Here. Thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is the agenda approval. If there are no objections, the agenda will be approved as submitted. Are there any objections? No? Okay. Agenda stands approved as submitted. We've got a couple of presentations here this evening. The first one from the Snow King Watershed Council. Eric Admin.
We forgot the flag salute.
Oh, flag salute? I missed it.
I'm sorry, Stan.
All right. Eric, could you lead us in the flag salute?
[laughing].
Thank you.
[inaudible].
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag. The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Okay, well now I have a presentation from the Snow King Watershed Council. Eric Admin.
All right, hello everybody.
Hello?
Uh, thanks, let me do your presentation. Is the mic on?
The touchpad, if the green light comes on, you're...
Is the green light on?
Go to the touchpad at the front, just push.
Okay. There we go. Now we're on. Okay, I just wanted to give you guys an update on what we've been up to as an organization. I spoke to you briefly during citizen comments a few meetings ago, and so I wanted to talk about kind of some of the issues that I brought up at that time, as well as just what we've been doing as an organization. So, just a little bit of background on our organization. You guys are probably pretty familiar with us, but we're dedicated to protecting and preserving local streams in natural areas. So, our vision is high quality of life in which local streams, rivers, lakes, and Puget Sound are clean and healthy. Our mission is working for the health of streams and watersheds in North King and South Snoeder's Counties. And the ways that we do that is by connecting people, empowering them, giving them ways that they can get involved in their local streams, advocacy for good laws and policies, promoting conservation, restoration, salmon recovery, and improving awareness and behavior with outreach and education. And so, go through some of the different ways we've been doing that. Current project areas that we're working on, we have a couple of projects. There's one that we worked on previously and one that we've been working on in partnership with the city, so that all, and I'll go over these in a little bit more detail, but Hooven Bog is one that we were engaged in up in South Snoeder's County, and Squires Landing is one that we're partnering with right here in Kenmore. In terms of salmon recovery activities, we've been partnering on Squires Landing, participating in Rye Eight, and we have a community-based water monitoring program, Snow King Water Watchers. Within that, we have a number of different areas that I'll get into individually, but includes construction stormwater monitoring, which is a big issue right now, general stream health monitoring, outreach and education. So, we've got, by training people to be volunteer water monitors, it kind of fosters a sense of stewardship amongst those people, and then they spread the information that they learn with others, and it just kind of generally raises awareness of streams in our area. And then we have kind of a, uh, I guess, appeals, review and appeals side that we've been involved in, and that's, we've had a number of different projects where we've reviewed designs of proposed development projects for appropriate stormwater controls, and found that they either were not or weren't, the jurisdiction wasn't actually necessarily enforcing its own regulations in review, so we've been able to get some better designs implemented. Currently, we're primarily engaged in some reviews up at Snoeder's County Airport, and I'll talk about those as well. So, Hooven Bog is an area that's mostly, I put it mostly a success story. There's a couple of caveats, but essentially, this was an area that we got engaged in. It's a 30-acre wetland in Snoeder's County. It's at the headwaters of Bear Creek. It was kind of a unique ecosystem. It's a spagnum bog fen wetland, but it's essentially, it's a type of area where it doesn't really have a lot of drainage out, mostly drainage in. It's got a unique sort of a pH, and so there was some development on the upland areas of this that were threatening this 30-acre bog. And so, we helped a community organization get up and running, and a combination of the community organization, their legal appeals, as well as us working with the Snoeder's County Executive's Office. Snoeder's County, in back in 2014, used 1.6 million of conservation futures to purchase the property for conservation. So, pretty much a success story, although still a little bit of management challenges there. Squires Landing Repair and Restoration, you're probably familiar with. So, this is something where originally we wrote a large-scale restoration grant that was going to encompass the whole site several years ago. We put that to the Salmon Recovery Council, and after the Salmon Recovery Funding Board reviewed it, they were primarily interested at that time in a smaller-scale project on the mouth of the creek. So, if you look at the little map there, the red line encompasses the boundary of the whole site, and then the yellow line encompasses the boundary of the current restoration area. So, that's currently, we had obtained a $70,000 Salmon Recovery Funding Board grant to do repair and restoration on the shorelines as indicated in the yellow. We're partnering with the city of Kenmore, as well as with the Adopt a Stream Foundation, and Adopt a Stream is the project manager, and they're implementing the project. Our goals there are basically to improve the shoreline, which is going to have a couple of effects. One is it's going to increase shading, and it's also going to increase habitat for snook fry that are returning up or that are heading out and on their way out to the ocean. We also recently obtained a commitment for an additional $65,000 for restoration, which may potentially, we had written a grant for a little bit more than that, which was going to extend the restoration area farther upstream, but it's, it's still going to get us a good ways farther up. It may get us about, if you look at the blue line on there that indicates the remaining path of the creek up towards Bothell Way, it may get us about halfway up there. So, here's just a couple of photos of the site and some planting activities that were taking place on the site. Another program that we got going a couple of years ago that's active here in Kenmore, as well as other local jurisdictions, is called Snow King Water Watchers. And this is a community-based water monitoring program, and we modeled this after, there's an organization called Global Water Watch, and also now an organization called Alabama Water Watch that's been around since the early 1990s, and it was founded by Dr. Bill Deutsch out of Auburn University. And they've expanded their program in Alabama to a statewide program. It's also expanded a separate kind of spinoff organization, is Global Water Watch, which is active now throughout Mexico and parts of South America, parts of Africa, and so we're like the Pacific Northwest branch of working with Global Water Watch. So, what we're doing is, we're promoting watershed stewardship, so people learning more about their local creeks. A lot of people are not aware of the fact that their local creeks also function as stormwater conveyances, so we're letting people learn about local creeks, what makes them healthy, different things that you can do to make them more healthy. We're monitoring about 25 different sites in multiple watersheds, so we're primarily focused along the Samamish River and tributaries of it, but we also have some Puget Sound coastal streams. So, we're monitoring Thornton Creek in Seattle, which goes out to Matthews Beach, McLeary and Lion Creeks. We partner with Lake Forest Park Stream Keepers that are in Lake Forest Park. In Kenmore, we're monitoring 0056 that goes through Loggloom Park, Swamp Creek, Little Swamp Creek, and then into Bothell, we're monitoring Horse Creek, North Creek, Samamish River, and Little Bear Creek in Woodinville are some of the creeks that we're monitoring locally along the Samamish. The different things that we monitor, one of the things that we monitor is water chemistry. So, variables like temperature, pH, turbidity, dissolved oxygen, those are variables that are important for salmon habitat. So, salmon can only live in a certain temperature range, a certain pH range. If there's too much turbidity, that means essentially mud in the water that can affect the health of things in the stream, and similarly dissolved oxygen is a variable that affects the health of salmon. We monitor bacteria, and so E. coli is what we're looking for. This is like a human health and recreation consideration. So, again, we're monitoring these local creeks, and typically, we find that they're in good health, with the exception of there are certain periods or certain places that may generate more E. coli. So, typically, when we find the worst is like first rain after it hasn't rained for a while, and things are washing off. And so, what that's telling you is, you know, you can do DNA testing, which we don't, to identify exactly where it's coming from, but that's kind of telling you that maybe those messages that, you know, pick up your dog poop, that those messages need to keep getting out there, that type of thing. But basically, we, we monitor for bacteria, we collect a sample, we incubate it, so that little styrofoam box there is kind of the, that's the incubator. They, we collect it with that left-hand side, there's this little bottle of media, we put a sample in there, put it in a petri dish, incubate it, and then after 30 to 48 hours, you read it, and you look at those petri dishes, and so everyone that you see as a dark blue dot represents an E. coli colony. So, you don't want to see it look like that, you want to see it look a lot more sparse. We also do biological monitoring. So, one of the things that is, one of the best indicators of stream health is the insects that live in the bottom of the creek, and in fancy terms, they call them benthic macroinvertebrates, but basically it means insects that live in the creek. And so, if you take samples of that, which we just do this once a year, you can go, okay, some of these are more pollution tolerant, some are more pollution intolerant. So, how many do I have that are in each of these different categories? And that gives you an idea of, okay, if I have only a bunch of pollution tolerant stuff and nothing that's pollution intolerant, then I generally have kind of a high level of pollution, where if I find more that are pollution intolerant, then maybe it's generally cleaner. So, it's kind of a long-term indicator. It's also a lot of fun. It's a great activity to do with kids, because you go up and you collect all these bugs and these things that swim around and wiggle and so on, and then they put them in these little dishes and look at what they found, and so it's a great, you know, something that people really engage in. Another area that we've been monitoring is construction stormwater runoff, and this is something that we do more on a, when we see it, we go check it type of basis, and this is something that I talked to you about previously, and something that we've encountered as a big issue right now with all the development that's happening throughout the area. So, the picture on the left-hand side there of the kind of almost muddy-looking water is a section of Little Swamp Creek, where it's going under Northeast Tuner and Third Street in Kenmore, and that was as a result of construction on a project up in Bothell, where they were not adequately controlling their stormwater runoff, their, their construction stormwater runoff. That's regulated, and so that's something where you can contact the local jurisdiction, which we've done, and we're working in partnership with Kenmore on this, and also the Department of Ecology. But this is probably one of the biggest areas that we are finding right now, that even though the law says you're supposed to do X to control your runoff, you get out there and you find that that's not really being done, or, you know, they say, oh, I can't do anything, it's too rainy. Well, they're supposed to take measures to do that. So, we're equipping our volunteers so that when they see these instances, they can go out, take a sample. That tube right there is what's called a turbidity tube, and you can see the number, it says 400. So, it's like, it's a tube that's about two to three feet long. You, you take a sample of water, you pour the water in it, and there's a little pattern in the bottom, and you look down to see if you can see that pattern, and if you can't see that pattern, then whatever depth the water's at where you can no longer see that pattern, it measures directly in what are called NTUs, which is nephelometric turbidity units, it's a technical term, but that's what the Department of Ecology uses to measure turbidity, so you can contact Department of Ecology and say, hey, we found X level of pollution, please come and do something about it. We've actually found in the past, when we brought this to the attention of different, like, we brought it to the attention of the city of Kenmore, that Kenmore staff, Richard Sawyer, Zach Richardson, have gone out and tried to do something about it, but it's something where it seems like even though they do, the problem keeps repeating, and we have to keep staying on these construction sites. Some of the program partners and sponsors that have been helping us get funding for this, King County Councilmember Rod Dombowski has been a big supporter. There's something called the Puget Sound Stewardship and Mitigation Fund, which is administered by the Rose Foundation. That was created as a settlement between Burlington Northern and Puget Sound Keeper Alliance for all the bank armoring that Burlington Northern did along Puget Sound. Fish and Wildlife, ALIA program, has helped us, King County Wastewater Treatment Division of Water Works Grant Program, and Global Water Watch. We've also been involved in some what we call watchdog activities, and so here's one that you may or may not have heard about. So, last calendar year, PSE put in new power poles through Swamp Creek Wetland Number Three, and one of our board members who lives nearby noticed what they were doing, and found out that what they'd used is they'd use these treated poles with a material called penta, and they have a permit with Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife that specifically says they're not going to use that. And so, they violated the terms of their permit. We contacted Department of Fish and Wildlife, and so ultimately, my understanding is that this summer, they're actually supposed to replace those poles with the proper poles. But those are examples of some of the things that we're doing as a watchdog activity. I mentioned some of the review stuff that we're doing, so there was an example of a plat on Little Bear Creek where they were trying to put a construction project too close to Little Bear Creek in the buffer. We were able to get them to modify that design and move it back. There is a development project where Snoeder's County Airport was trying to turn a five-acre wetland into a detention pond, and they also subcontracted, there's basically illegally constructed a parking lot in a wetland. And we did a joint Clean Water Act lawsuit with a group called Waste Action Project that resulted in $175,000 being used to construct rain gardens in Swamp Creek Watershed. And we also, we have some other projects going up at Paint Field Passenger Terminal. They had proposed a certain design, and we reviewed their design, basically were able to get them to implement a better design from a stormwater standpoint. Terms of partnering with Kenmore specifically, we've been partnering on Squires Landing Repair and Restoration. Kenmore actually gave us a grant, I think it was either a year or two ago, to help do wetlands assessments, to pay for wetlands assessments in the Swamp Creek Watershed, and based on the fact that we were able to characterize these wetlands, that was a contributing factor that helped us win that settlement. And so, ultimately, you know, that $3,000 helped leverage to $175,000 of rain gardens being constructed in the Swamp Creek Watershed. Back this recent March, we did a Swamp Creek Watershed Forum here in City Hall, and we had over 50 streamside landowners up and down Swamp Creek who were very interested, and they learned about the natural history of Swamp Creek and things they can do to benefit the creek. And then, as I mentioned, we've been partnering with Kenmore on construction stormwater enforcement. Kenmore issues and opportunities. So, some of the main things that affect the health of our creeks around here are things like buffers, stormwater regulations, tree ordinances, implementing things like low-impact development, which is a technique where you can minimize your stormwater runoff off a site. And Kenmore's doing pretty well on the regulatory side, which is good. On the enforcement side, I think that's where the challenges are in terms of construction stormwater management, and I don't know how enforcement is going on, for instance, tree regulations, but some ways that you guys can continue to, to benefit the creeks around here would be, one example would be supporting grants to help property owners who want to do retrofit their property with things that'll reduce the stormwater runoff, and obviously keep partnering with us. What we're going to be doing at Kenmore this, in the future, we're going to continue to do our water quality monitoring, and we intend to come back and deliver periodic stream report cards to you guys to give you a heads-up, here's what we're finding on the local creeks. And we're going to keep working with you on Squires Landing, and we also have planned some water monitoring and some education and outreach events where we'll say, maybe down at Loggloom Park, we'll have an event where we're doing some water monitoring, and people can go, oh, you know, learn about the quality of the stream and the history of it, what they can do to get involved. And that's it. That's all I got for you. So, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Smith.
Thanks, Eric. As always, I appreciate hearing from you and getting updates on this, and I appreciate all the work and energy that you put into your organization on this, and so it's, we benefit immensely from it. I wanted to ask you, and you touched on at the very end about the enforcement and the regulations, so it sounds like, it sounds like it's the enforcement side more than the regulatory side right now when you see the, the heavy runoff. Is there anything in particular that you see that has been effective or is effective on the enforcement in, in other municipalities, or is it just a boots-on-the-ground type issue?
I really think it's a boots-on-the-ground issue, because I think that, you know, when it typically happens is when a site is being developed, and currently, the, the current model of site development around here is cut down the trees, grade the lot, and then dig your holes, put in your detention pond, and then build your houses. You know, there's other ways you can develop where you cut less vegetation and that type of thing. That's more the regulatory side, but, you know, you'll have a, a clearing and grading contractor who works in multiple jurisdictions. You would think that they would be probably pretty consistent or aware of the regulations, but, you know, they come in and they do a certain amount of erosion control measures, but I don't, there's not really a, a feedback loop to ensure whether, what they're doing is actually solving the problem. So, I, I really think the issue is a boots-on-the-ground issue, and I don't know that the city has the staffing or the resources to do it, so probably the, you know, one of the easiest ways to help get more boots on the ground is to help volunteer organizations get out there and do more of the eyes-on-a-stream type thing. But to the extent that the city can do more boots on the ground, that's, I think that's really the issue.
Thank you.
Councilmember Danuski.
Hi, thank you. There we go. Thank you for all your work. You put a lot of time into it, and it's appreciated. Two questions. For Swamp Creek, so I've seen a lot of the improvements that you've done as I'm kayaking around, and what is the maintenance plan on there? How often do people get out there and, you know, take out the trees that didn't make it, and weed and all that?
So, the grant funding provides for a certain amount of stewardship activities that's ongoing, you know, for the first probably two to three years post-planting, but after that, then it is up to the city to have a stewardship plan in place, or to, to figure out how the stewardship's going to happen. And so, that's something where, you know, I was just talking with Rob about this just before this meeting, that's something where you can maybe partner with local volunteer groups to do some stewardship activities.
We've got great volunteers here.
Yeah. So, that would be probably the cheapest and easiest way to do it, but there, there does need to be some work by the city in partnership with others to develop a, a long-term stewardship plan, and that's something where I think that you can look around, we were just talking about another example further up on Swamp Creek, where it looks to me like that stewardship's not happening quite as much as it could or should, and so you get some areas that just kind of revert back, so, but...
You've got to stay on top of it.
Yeah, exactly. But the current, the plan for the, the grant funding gets you kind of up for the first two or three years of that.
Okay. And then a question on the turbidity and the construction. So, you said you found turbidity, and then you went out and traced it up to a construction site in Bothell. What do you do? Do you just kind of go upstream until you see a big construction site and...
Yep.
Got it from there? It's just that simple?
That's exactly what you do. So, I can show you some other pictures where you can, you can see different sources of water coming into the creek, and so you can actually see like a split flow in the creek at a certain point, where it's coming in clear, and then all of a sudden, it becomes muddy, and it's pretty obvious where it's coming from.
And you just walk up.
So, yeah, it's a pretty easy detective work, you just walk up and find it, and then typically what we do is we'll take some measurements and some pictures, and we'll report it to the Department of Ecology and also email the city of Kenmore and try to get them to go bug the contractor.
And how about, sorry, I'm totally monopolizing this. For the boots-on-the-ground aspects, and you mentioned volunteers, how receptive are construction companies with volunteers coming up and saying, you're doing this wrong?
Well, Stacy and I have done that on numerous occasions at the local construction sites on our stream, and they're polite, you know, and they're helpful, because I mean, they, they don't, we don't go onto their construction site, you know, we just go downstream from their construction site, but if we note that they're letting off more runoff than they should be, we, we talk to them about it, but the, you know, so far, the one, the one that we've dealt with, they've been very, they've been polite.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah. Councilmember Sperry.
More of a comment. I just, I wanted to thank you. I really appreciate your watershed-wide approach to the streams in Kenmore, because, as you know, we've dealt a lot with the flooding and the sediment issues, and it always frustrated me that we have 8% of this, of Swamp Creek's stream, but 100% of the water. So, thank you for, you know, really working with the upstream neighbors and keeping the health and things going. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. And actually, something I should mention is that from Councilmember Dombowski's office, they have, the King County Councilmembers get to, there's, there's a King County Waterworks funding source, and there's two ways to tap into that funding source, and one is that each council member gets to suggest projects and propose projects, and then the other is there's a competitive grant process that goes through a different review process. And so, through Councilmember Dombowski's allocation, we've also been able to get some money for building some rain gardens in the King County portion of Swamp Creek Watershed, so that means probably Kenmore. And so, we'll have some, you know, they're not going to be widespread enough necessarily to have a gigantic impact, but I think they'll be a great demonstra, demonstration project and also be a good example for Snoeder's County that here's something that King County is stepping up to do, and you could do some more of it as well.
Councilmember Herbig.
I have a lot to add. I just wanted to thank you for everything that you do for our community. It's, it's amazing what you guys do with kind of limited resources and, and volunteers, and I can't thank you enough for everything you do, so.
Thanks.
Councilmember Curtis, no? I had a couple of comments and questions. You were planting at the mouth of the creek...
Mm-hmm.
And you're putting plants in, in the middle of the reed canary grass.
Mm-hmm.
And as I recall, in a tour down in Auburn at their restoration project down there several years ago, the theory was if you plant shade shrubbery on trees, that you get rid of the canary grass. Has that been borne out in projects like this? Does it, does it help?
Yeah, it does, actually. We have an example, and we live on a segment of Little Swamp Creek on 192nd Street, and part of what got us involved in this in the first place was that we had a restoration project done there by the Adopt a Stream Foundation back in 2009, and we also got a downstream landowner to have a restoration project done there as well. And so, what's happened was the various plants and shrubs that have grown up there, ranging from salmon berry to alder trees, have gotten big enough and shaded out the canary grass to where I used to have to go back in there and regularly just mow that stuff down and weed it, and now hardly have to do it at all in the areas where it's, those other plants have grown up. So, you know, within, as long as you can achieve stewardship for a period of several years, you get to a certain point where it becomes kind of self-maintaining.
Yeah, that's good. I know I have areas in my backyard that I can't grow grass under the trees, yeah. Several years ago, there was a restoration project upstream, almost up to 522...
Mm-hmm.
With volunteers, what was that, city manager, was it Conservation Corps helping with that, or what? But I was wondering how that is holding up and whether you're monitoring that as well, or...
Yeah, Eric and I were just talking about that, just, just a few minutes ago. Yeah, a couple times this summer, our maintenance crew goes in and does line trimming to keep the grass down, and as long as we can keep the grass and the blackberries back, they should be okay. But we did have, a couple years into it, we noticed that the, the beavers were getting at some of the trees that were planted, and so a Boy Scout troop went in and put in some chicken wire around the remaining trees that were left, so. But, yeah, that area could definitely use lots of love from a group that wants to adopt it and take care of it. Without that, we're just doing the minimal, going in there once, once or twice a year to do some line trimming to keep, to keep the weeds at bay.
That's, that's farther up the creek, up towards...
It is. And in fact, that's a site that, where Stacy and I, that's one of our water monitoring sites. And that's actually a site where King County's been doing water monitoring as well for, since the 1970s.
Okay.
But we've actually found, last time we were there, just a couple of weeks ago, that we actually could not even walk down to the little, sort of a beach where we do our water monitoring because the knotweed had got so thick and overgrown as well as the blackberries. We had to bushwhack down there. So I would say that that's a site, that's kind of an example where maybe not quite enough ongoing stewardship has happened, where it's going to take a bit of a work project to get it back to clear those invasives and then a little bit less work following that. But I think that that, that does kind of point out the example of what happens if you don't have quite enough ongoing stewardship.
You started off your presentation talking about E. coli. And E. coli, in the past, has been a problem at Logg Boom Park, north end of the lake, everything blowing in. And you have people walking their dogs as part of the problem, but geese are a big part of the problem. Is it still a problem when, when the weather gets warm and people want to go swimming? That it's a problem with too much E. coli?
You know, that's a good question. We don't actually monitor the shore, the beach part of Logg Boom Park. You know, that would be someplace, and I'm not sure, I know that the...
The Health Department.
I think the Health Department does monitoring of local beaches for E. coli. So I don't know if that's something that they already do. But that also would be a case where it would be pretty easy if the city wanted us to say, do that monitoring on it. You know, I don't know that we would be able to do it as, you know, daily as you'd want it for beach usage in the summer. But that would be something where we could partner with Kenmore, we could add some monitoring there.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Eric, thank you very much. Thanks for all you do for the city. The next presentation is our Walk Friendly Communities Award. I introduce Lester Harris, our Community Relations Manager.
So in late April, the City of Kenmore was designated as a Bronze Level Walk Friendly Community by Walk Friendly Communities. Walk Friendly Communities is a national recognition program aimed to encourage communities across the United States to establish or recommit to a high priority for providing safer walking environments within your community. In this organization, they award designations from Bronze Level to Platinum Level to participating communities with a commitment in providing, in sustaining walkability. So the application process was very extensive and highlighted the city's efforts. A lot of it had to actually do with our efforts around our Target Zero Initiative. So it was from planning and engineering and design to our outreach and our law enforcement, our enforcement efforts. So I wanted to share with you a few highlights from the application review panel. They were particularly impressed with the city's commitment to working with our community members, our neighborhoods, on the Transportation Plan Program, the NTPP. They said it was a proactive approach to improving safety across our entire community by focusing on the particular needs of different neighborhoods. So that was their top number-one point that they wanted to make. The city's plans, the second point that they wanted to highlight was the city's plans are anchored by an aggressive Target Zero Initiative and complete streets approach, which helped frame pedestrian safety issues in the context of a larger transportation system. So they liked how we use more of a network focus rather than a spot-by-spot approach. And lastly, their, their third point that they wanted to make was that they were impressed with our recent progress to identify and fill sidewalk, sidewalk gaps using dedicated funding, working toward reconnecting our pedestrian network. So Kenmore is one of three cities within Washington State. We have joined Seattle, which is at the Platinum Level, and Bellevue there at the Silver Level. So we're one of three cities in Washington State that have this designation. So this designation is made possible by the leadership and support of several people in our organization, including City Council. But tonight, I would like to take the opportunity to invite our Communications Assistant, Melody Yonick, and our Traffic Engineer, Brett Shock, to accept the Walk Friendly Community plaque and recognize their efforts for not only filling out the application, but for the work they have done and continuing to do in making our, making Kenmore a safer community. So thank you. (APPLAUSE).
This is a time where citizens have an opportunity to express their views on issues that are important to you and to the community. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Clerk, could you call the first person?
Vicki Grayland. Hello, my name is Vicki Grayland. I live in Kenmore. And I want to talk about the baseball fields again. I've come late to this issue, and I'm sincerely trying to understand all viewpoints. So when I first heard about it, it seemed like the most natural solution would be to turn to the school district and use the school playgrounds. And I've been looking into that, and I get, I went to coffee with the council and asked about that. And I was told, well, there, what is the word? There's a lot of bureaucracy there, and they're not cooperative, was the general idea I'm getting. But I learned just about two hours ago that the City of Bothell is working with the school district to, the City of Bothell would maintain the fields in exchange for use of the fields. I also learned there's a new superintendent there who's been there about a year, who's made a concerted effort to be more open to the community and to make the schools a real community place. So I would like to encourage you all to investigate that, that idea further and to have actually come up with some hard facts on that. I keep asking for real data instead of vague statements like, "There's a bureaucracy." So, thank you. I will continue my own investigations.
Thank you.
John Hendrickson?
Good evening, Council John Hendrickson, Kenmore, Washington. In late May, I came to the council and spoke to you about the issue of the corporate culture on the council and how the state's set up with seven council members that you hope, that you kind of help keep each other in check. And I think there's a problem, a longstanding problem of groupthink on the council and not receptive to constructive criticism and instead turn around and attack people who, who make that constructive criticism. I gave an example with, when you guys tried to change the paw permit, the legislation which would give you a blanket exemption, you wouldn't have to do any environmental protection for your projects. You're trying to use that for the St. Ed's Ball Field. And I played a recording where Nigel asked a question about, would this paw permit be approved by the administrative staff? And is that how it's done in other cities generally? And our, our staff said yes, and that was a materially false statement of fact. And, and so the question is, why isn't anybody getting up and saying, "Hey, this isn't right"? You know, Dave, the mayor responded, and he went on the attack. You know, you would hope that he would say, you know, "This really concerns us that if, you know, receiving false information, you represent 20,000 people. In effect, you're giving false information to 20,000 people." And on a deeper level, you would hope that the council would say, you know, "I know that person. If you listen to her voice, she didn't sound comfortable giving that false information. She's actually very competent." And competent people who are worth their salt work hard because they want to make an honest living. So instead, Dave didn't address that. He turned around and attacked me, said, "I accused the council of violating Open Public Meetings Act," and I had to respond by the end of the week. Completely off-topic. So it reminded me back in 2011, the same thing happened, where at one of our retreats, I raised the issue of road tax and public safety. Council was abusive towards me. A citizen went to NPR radio and complained. They interviewed me. I told them right out of this report, "We collect road taxes every year for public safety. It's not being spent on public safety." Dave responded and said, "Hendrickson's always saying we're going bankrupt." I never said we're going bankrupt. We had $18,000 in the bank, $750,000 of unused taxing authority, and we're allowed to put ourselves in debt for $30 million without public approval." Here's what Dave said.
Councilmember and mayor David Baker says Hendrickson has been predicting the city's imminent bankruptcy for years.
In 2007, it was 2010, and then 2011, he says, "We're going to be broke by 2013." We have very talented staff to let the city go bankrupt.
That's the behavior of a...
Deputy Mayor, we're at three minutes.
Predator and con artist. You guys should do, change that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else signed up, city clerk?
No, there is not.
Okay. Okay, I want to thank Ms. Grayland. Is that I'm pronouncing that right?
Yes.
Grayland? Thank you for your, your suggestion on working with the school district. We've done it on and off over the years and had some, some difficulty, not because of the bureaucracy, but because of different goals for the ball fields and maintenance and so on. And there's been some difficulty. We are working with the school district with Moreland's Park. It's our park, but they use it as their playground. And we have a, a working relationship with the school district on that. And we're open to any kind of a relationship that benefits both the school district and the city. And we've explored those numerous times over the years. So anything you can come up with that might be of assistance to us, please let us know, so.
I'm going to the school board meeting next Tuesday night at 7:00.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Hendrickson, we thank you for your comments. I don't want to attack you. I won't attack you. But I thank you for your comments, and we are constantly reevaluating our council procedures. And maybe sometime in the future, we might take up your suggestions. So thank you very much for bringing to us. Moving on. Next item is consent agenda. All those in favor of approving this consent agenda as written, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved as submitted. On the business agenda, the first item is consideration of the City of Kenmore Municipal Code Changes Addressing Vegetation and Sidewalk Maintenance. Brett Shock.
It's okay.
Technology.
It goes to sleep.
Good evening, councilmembers. So this is a second touch on this issue of vegetation and sidewalk maintenance. Previously, got some feedback on the direction we wanted to go with some, some code changes. So this is just a presentation of those draft code changes. If everything's in order and get a little bit more feedback on making sure we're going in the right direction, then we'll proceed to advertising these changes and return with a hearing and the formal adoption of these code changes. So just a quick agenda. I'll review in both categories, vegetation and sidewalk maintenance, the feedback received from the council on March 13th of this year, and then just identify the proposed code language changes in both sections. So we'll touch on vegetation maintenance first. The council feedback back in March was to maintain our reactive program of vegetation maintenance, whether that's through citizen comments, through our Citizen Action Response System, or just staff noticing an issue in the field. And then we wanted to clarify the expectations for property owners, but leave the responsibility for maintaining vegetation with the property owners. The code was a little vague, and there was a split in the sections as to where vegetation maintenance was defined. So there are four sections of the code that were changed. Two of them, the changes are just a reference change. This is one of those, just calling out nuisance vegetation, referring it to the vegetation maintenance, I guess we'll call it the proper vegetation maintenance section. This section of the code clarifies the limits of property owner responsibility to better meet the existing conditions across the city. The previous language referred to a planter strip that didn't really meet all of the conditions that we have out there. We have curb in some locations, no curb in others, sidewalk in some locations, no sidewalk in others. So these changes just kind of address that and say, pretty much from the edge of the hardscape to your property line, it's your responsibility to maintain that vegetation. It also revises the definitions of a budding property owner to match the revised code of Washington, which kind of speaks to the same language. And these are just an example of two of those situations. On the left, we have a situation where there's a curb and then an area that would have met the previous definition of planter strip. But the picture on the right, it's sort of a little more vague as to what the planter strip really is. And then in this section, with these, the graphic you see here, better define the actual maintenance requirements for property owners. So it's a box 11 feet tall essentially over vehicle travel lanes that must be kept clear of vegetation, and then a box, minimum of four feet wide and eight feet tall in bicycle and pedestrian areas. There's an existing graphic that defines that the corners, that vegetation can be as high as two feet, but there needs to be a window between two and eight feet clear for vehicles to see around the corners. So we now have a text description of each of those requirements for property owners to follow and pictures to go along with it. And then in discussing this internally, I wanted to mention that we realized that there is a lot of drainage facilities that also fall in this area of property owner responsibility. So we're going to add a graphic similar to this that kind of defines the area of responsibility for mowing those, those drainage strips, vegetated buffers and everything. So there is still an allowance for the assignment of the cost of maintaining these if property owners are non-responsive at the city manager's discretion. And then there's also an allowance for city vegetation maintenance at the city manager's discretion. We have some places where on the arterials, we do some maintenance right now. And then this section is another one that's just a reference back. This is a code section that addresses that, the corner visibility for vehicles, and it just refers back to the definition of planter strip. So I just wanted to make sure that we are headed in the right direction, that we addressed all the council's previous direction, and that you're okay with the allowances for the city manager's discretion in both the assigning of the cost and doing some city maintenance in, in certain areas. So, yeah, open to feedback.
Councilmember Curtis?
I would just comment that, as I remember the suggestions that we had, it sounds like you've incorporated them, and I'm pretty happy with this.
Okay.
Councilmember Danuski.
Yeah, I'm happy with this. One question I think I know the answer to, but in the definition of abutting property, it says the, having frontage. They're still responsible if their property has frontage to a road, but then like their backside is on 68th, are they still, they're still responsible for the backside as well?
Yes.
Okay. And that's where I'm really happy that, you know, we step in on some of that because having somebody, you know, make their loan Margot around three or four blocks may not be always as practical.
Yeah, for sure.
So, thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thanks for the presentation or the update, Brett. And the only thing I wanted to add was on the bottom of the first page of Attachment A, where you've got four different Roman numerals listed, the, it doesn't read correctly. And from an English standpoint, I assume that when the code is written and this is incorporated, it would be clarified, but it's, the verbiage isn't right.
Okay.
So you might want to take a look at that.
All right. Will do.
Any other questions? Councilmember Sperry.
More comments than questions. Thank you for incorporating the feedback, and I definitely think you are on the right track. I like the graphic. I think that's going to be an important communication tool for property owners to have a sense of what actually is expected. And lastly, I appreciate, you know, we always have what council goal we're addressing with each agenda item, and I appreciate the fact that this is connected to our pedestrian and bike safety. And I think that's really important to keep that connection when we're, you know, needing to reach out to property owners and all that. And I'm personally convicted, because I have a huge bank that grows all these things, so I'll work on it.
All right. You might have touched on it a bit, but how are we educating the public on this before we clamp down on them and say, "Hey, you need to take care of your trees overhanging on the sidewalk"? Is there, is there an education program that we're having through the newsletter? Or how are we going to inform the public that we're going to be enforcing this?
It's been mentioned in a newsletter, I think it wasn't the last, I think it was the one before, there was a quick little snippet on it.
Yeah.
But I am putting together a, kind of like a white paper, using that same graphic and another couple showing a sidewalk situation. We're hoping to have that available either on the website or maybe a few printed copies available. And then right now, when there is a vegetation issue, and I send out a letter to a property owner, I make sure to go out there and snap a picture of their property and draw a red box and say, you know, "We need you to cut right here." Very specific about, you know, what we need cleared. That's been, people have been very appreciative of it.
So the first step is, is education of the rules and what they need to do to-
Yeah.
-to participate-
Yep.
-before you really lean on them.
Yes.
Okay.
In my time here, I've never had a vegetation trimming letter I've sent out that there wasn't compliance with it, so.
Okay. Good, thanks. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, I thank you very much.
All right. So move on to sidewalk maintenance.
Pardon me?
Uh, there's a-
Do we need to act on this? I'm sorry.
Oh, uh-
You're not done? I'm sorry.
Yeah. There's a second section, sorry. So we also have sidewalk maintenance. That's the second component of this.
Sorry.
That's all right. So the council feedback from the 13th was to change from a reactive program to a proactive program of sidewalk maintenance. We've done some identification through an ADA inventory. We need to kind of polish that up and finish it up to really have a good handle on where the problems are, what the magnitude of our problems are with our sidewalks. The council feedback was to have property owners remain responsible for repair if it's due to private property owner activity, whether that's vegetation that was planted that caused the damage, or vehicle damage, or, you know, some other cause that can be identified to be on the private property, and the private property owner would then be responsible for the repair of those sidewalks. In all other cases, the city would assume responsibility for the repair of sidewalks. So in this section of the code, we added language to allow for that determination by the city staff as to what the, the cause of the damage is, whether it's public or private or unknown. I guess if it falls in the unknown, that would be a situation where the city would take on those, that repair. So again, tree roots, you know, not planted by a public entity, that would be something that would be on the private property owner. Or a private vehicle traffic entering a driveway, you know, a heavy vehicle that can be identified going in and out of a driveway that's caused sidewalk damage. This section change also defines the city manager's written conclusions as the resolution to assign costs. That's something just to match up with the RCWs and the way that costs can be assigned to the property owner, if need be. And then the second section of the code, we just changed it to better follow the existing RCW language on assigning the cost to property owners. It allows for the assignment of that cost as a lien, if necessary. And then it's also capped at 25% of the overall property evaluation, or, sorry, property valuation. So that could be important if it's an undeveloped property, if there was sidewalk abutting. And then property owners may appeal these decisions to the Public Works Director for appealing the decision as to the assignment of responsibility. So second set of feedback, just want to confirm that we covered all your concerns from the previous meeting, and again, that we're on the right track with these proposed code changes. And then just want to let you know, right now, we're estimating that if we have, you know, biannual repair budget, you know, $50,000 has been the number that's been kind of thrown around, we would probably put that in there for each year, but only do one set of repairs every other year, just to minimize our overhead costs basically for contractors. And we would do a prioritized approach once we finish our assessment of where we have a need for sidewalk repair, and just kind of use those funds to work our way down that prioritized list. So I open it up to any feedback on these changes.
Okay. Any comments? Councilmember Sperry.
Thank you again. This time, I actually do have a question. So the street trees. So I'm just, you know, visualizing, you know, 61st obviously is something that we've known about for a long time, and the trees are, caused quite a bit of damage. And then also, we see, not as extensive, but some on 73rd. And those trees were obviously planted before the city ever became a city. And is it like, I mean, do we know who was responsible for those trees? Or is it because they are essentially street trees, it's assumed that a public entity planted that?
In general, yes. Your second.
Okay.
If they're planted, street trees, you know, especially if they were before the city was incorporated, it's-
Okay.
-it's likely they would be public trees. There might be some cases where it was a private tree.
Does your code address, I know that we were very careful when we planted the trees to plant the kind that would not, you know, have the roots that would do the damage, and I believe there's like root boxes, and so there was a lot of careful consideration. So would one, so say we, you know, repaired the sidewalk and all that, would that also likely include replacing the tree with something that would not essentially cause the same problem again?
In some cases, it may, yeah. We would not want to spend the money on a repair that's just going to be gone in another five to 10 years, so for sure.
Yeah, because you kind of get this sort of tilted look, you know, around the root balls and stuff.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Danuski.
Yeah, I like this. I'm glad that we're being a little more proactive on the maintenance, and it seems a little more fair that, you know, it's not all on the property owner, and we're stepping up for some of it, so I like it.
Good.
Councilmember Smith.
Brett, can you tell me, is the 25% of assessed value on the land portion, is that a typical thing that municipalities use? I don't recall seeing that before in any of our code, and I was just wondering.
Yeah, I think the, the neighboring municipalities do have that cap, and it's actually in the RCWs as well. I think in the RCWs, it's 50%.
50?
But we, we had it before as 25.
Okay.
And I believe it's Bothell that has it at 25, and maybe Kirkland as well.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Councilmember Sperry.
Just so I'm clear, follow-up on Brent's question. So 25% of the land value, not the improvements, correct?
I believe it is actually the improved. I believe it's the market value of the property.
Best value?
Yeah.
Could you check, maybe, and get back to us on that?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That's kind of a big difference.
Yeah, for sure.
Councilmember Sperry referred to some trees on 73rd, and did you talk about 61st? I might have missed it.
I just mentioned 61st. I didn't talk in specifics.
All those, those roses, beautiful trees, when they turn and fall, it's spectacular. And we've got problems with the sidewalk all along there. They obviously, since it's a whole road, weren't planted by the property owners.
Yeah.
What's the latest? There were several alternatives, we're trying to figure out what to do with that. Have we decided as a city what we're going to do with that sidewalk?
Not yet. We actually have a design shret coming up in July with a consultant where we're going to hear about some alternatives. So it's, it's in the works. We'll hear this fall. It's in the works. We'll have a better idea this fall.
Okay. Very, thank you very much. Do we need to act on what you proposed here?
No, just looking for feedback on this one. You've provided that.
Yeah, I think we're with you.
Okay.
I don't, I don't hear any negative comments, so go for it.
All right.
It looks good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And like I said, next steps, we'll return with the actual code changes.
Okay. Next item is walkways and waterways. Update, Chris Overleas, Public Works Director, and Debbie Bent, Community Development Director, and Joanne Gregory, Finance and Administration Director. And I don't see Chris.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, Chris had to, Chris had, was not feeling well today, so I'm filling in for her. And Debbie Bent had to deal with a kind of an urgent family matter, so it's just Joanne and me tonight. So hopefully, we'll do okay in their absence. And I just need to pull up something here on the internet really quick. But just a way of background for the audience, this is, what I'm about to tell you is something you know quite well. But in 2015 and 2016, the City of Kenmore went through the Imagine Kenmore process, where we did a pretty big effort to ask the community what they wanted to see in the form of park improvements and transportation safety improvements. And so we went, we had community meetings, we had online surveys, we had statistically valid surveys, we had interactive online methods of getting input. We actually got hundreds of citizens to participate. And through that process, we heard pretty loud and clear that our citizens wanted to see more sidewalks and bike lanes on arterial roads. And when it comes to parks, they wanted to get better access to the water. So sidewalks, bike lanes on arterials, and get me to the water. Those were the two main messages that we heard. And sometimes we forget, you know, once, once we check the box on something and move on, we forget about all the work that went into it. But I want to recognize you as a city council and all my coworkers, and what a great team they were, in really soliciting that, that input from the community. And we were really pleased with how it went, and we were really glad to see the efforts of the community throughout the entire Imagine Kenmore process. So based on all that feedback and all that we heard, we, in partnership with the community, when I say we, I mean the city, you, staff, in partnership with the community, came up with five proposed projects. Three waterfront park improvements and two arterial sidewalk and bike lane projects. And this became known as walkways and waterways. So it went from Imagine Kenmore to walkways and waterways. And the waterways portion, of course, are the waterfront improvements at the three parks, Log Boom Park, Squires Landing, and Rhododendron Park. And then the two arterial sidewalk and bike lane projects are on 1A to Drive and 68th Avenue. And for the sidewalk and bike lane piece of it, this, what this will do is it will get continuous bike lanes and sidewalks on our main north-south arterial from city limit to city limit. So that will be pretty exciting when it happens. So you as the council said, "Okay, let's take this walkways and waterways idea with its five projects to the voters." And so in November of 2016, our citizens voted on the walkways and waterways project, and 64% said yes to that. It'll increase property taxes by about $15 a month for about a, no, I'm sorry, about $13 a month for a $500,000 home in the city. And again, like Imagine Kenmore, walkways and waterways was pretty extensive, too. We took the show on the road, an informative show, and went to homeowners association groups, PTAs. We had open houses and it was quite a bit of effort, again, on my coworker's part in getting the word out to the community and educating them about the facts of this project. So like I said, 64% said yes. Because it was a bond measure, it needed 60% approval, so just a little above what was needed. And then soon thereafter, very soon thereafter, Joanne Gregory made the case to Standard Empores for our bond rating, because we had not issued debt like this before in the past. And because we had not, we did not have a bond rating. And so soon after, like a, like a week after it passed, Joanne Gregory made the case, and I got to go down with her to San Francisco for a bond rating to Standard Empores. And lo and behold, they gave the city the highest rating possible, which is a AAA bond rating. So our, our bond rating is higher than the federal government's, so. So it's pretty cool. Yeah, so, anyway, but others, there are other cities with AAA bond ratings, other entities around here. North Shore Utility District has a AAA bond rating. Bellevue has a AAA bond rating. Samamish has a AAA bond rating. So we're in good company, but it's not easy, and our cash reserves and, and our other policies that we've been administering and holding tightly to are among the reasons for that AAA bond rating. Well, once it passed, we knew we needed to get moving, and we gave ourselves a pretty good timeline on all these projects, early to mid 2020s. And I know that sounds like a long time, but compared to maybe like Sound Transit, it actually sounded not so far into the future. So the waterfront improvements in particular at Log Boom and Squires are going to take a long time, many years to get approval because of the agencies that are going to be involved. But the good news is, we did hit the ground running on these projects, especially Squires and Log Boom and Rhododendron, because we already had some conceptual design work done. And so if you turn to your council bills, I'll just run through this really quickly. The first one is Rhododendron Park. And we're, our original estimate for completion of the, what we're now calling Water Walk between the field and the river, thank you, Councilmember Sperry, for that great term, because we were calling it a Board Walk, but there aren't any boards involved, so we're calling it a Water Walk instead. It'll be a more environmentally friendly grid system that'll be used elevated above the natural areas. But the original estimate for completion was 2019. Our new estimate is 2018. We actually went out to bid for this project, and bids were opened today. But I was at my son's high school graduation today, and I have not heard the precise news on the bid opening for this project, so I'm not sure how the bids were when they came in. We are in a very challenging construction and bid environment right now, and projects are tending to bid high right now, so I'm not, I don't have high hopes. But first thing, when I get to work tomorrow, I'll check with my coworkers and see how the bids came in. We also combined the bid for this project at Rhododendron with the new dock at Rhododendron, and also the new dock at Squires Landing. We put all three of those into one, one package, and they were, all three of them were bid on earlier today. If, if the bids came in favorable, we'll be able to award the bids in July and direct the contractor to proceed later this summer. And- And the window for doing in-water work is going to be in the fall, particularly in November. We do have one permit yet to obtain, and that is the Army Corps of Engineers permit for Squire's Landing float. But like I said, the, the work window for that isn't until November-ish of this year. And we have confidence we'll obtain that permit before the work window commences. Is there any questions on Rhododendron Park before I move on? Okay. It will also include some parking improvements and some driveway access improvements as well, including ADA parking. All right, for Log Boom Access and Viewing, like I said, we had already had some conceptual work done on that in 2015 and 2016. So they were able to, the, the consultant who's Mott McDonald, they were able to get started pretty quickly on some additional field work, including surveying, delineating the wetland, and also soil exploration. We hope to have a, a public outreach meeting in the fall for Log Boom Park. And in early 2018, we anticipate having 30% plans and designs ready for permit submittal. And that permits process is what's going to take a lot of years. So hopefully in early 2018, we'll be able to award, or we'll be able to submit the, the, what they call the JARPA, the Joint Aquatic, help me out, Joint Aquatic something permit. Anyway, it's a, it's a permit that allows you to apply all at once with multiple agencies, so. Moving on to Squire's Landing. Similar to Log Boom Park, the conceptual work had been done, and so they were able to do some site investigation, including the survey wetland delineation. Also similar to Log Boom, they plan on having a public outreach meeting in the fall and 30% plans and documentation and being ready to submit for permits in early 2018. Moving on to the transportation side of the equation. Juanita Drive, the sidewalk and bicycle lanes project, design is underway. They've been doing a lot of field work and site investigation. I was actually able to review a full layout of, kind of conceptually, what they have for the project. And it was on a plan that stretched from that podium to maybe the end of this table. And it showed the full length of Juanita Drive from 170th all the way to Kirkland. And they were able to identify issues where they're going to need to install retaining walls and make the road wider. And there are, there are obviously expectations that we're going to create sidewalks and bike lanes. But we're also getting inquiries from the community about widening the road. Now, this project wasn't about widening the road for cars. This project was about pedestrians and cyclists. That said, there are, there are opportunities on Juanita Drive where it will make sense to offer turn lanes and refuge lanes that will make it more safe for pedestrians and cyclists. And so we're not going to be widening the whole road, and I'm, I'm hoping that the, that our citizens aren't expecting that, because we certainly have not been sending that message. But there might be limited opportunities where we might be able to create turn pockets and widen in certain locations. For me, I'm a regular user of that road. I think it's good policy for city councils to require their city managers to live in the city in which they work, because I see and experience a lot more things because I live in the city. And so I live at the south end of the city, and I take Juanita Drive all the way to the Arrowhead neighborhood. And I can certainly tell you where those bottlenecks are and where those opportunities for widening are. And we can use lots of traffic data and lots of modeling to guess where those opportunities for widening are going to be. But I think it's also the users who know best. And so I'm encouraging my coworkers to definitely listen to the users and, and help us identify where those opportunities for left turn pockets and widening are going to be. There's some also additional good news on this, and if you look in your packet, you'll see that they're estimating a 30% design for this in mid-July, which is really good, because we need that level of design in order to apply for Transportation Improvement Board funding. You may recall that in the walkways and waterways bond measure, that this, that Juanita Drive is a $12.7 million project, and only $5 million of that is coming from the walkways and waterways bond measure. Where is the other 7.7 coming from? It's coming from grants. At least that's the hope. We think we have a good case, a strong case, for applying for some grant funding for Juanita Drive. We're receiving good signals from the Transportation Improvement Board that this is a good project. So we're, we're going to be applying for the full length of Juanita Drive through the Transportation Improvement Board, and the applications for that are due this summer. And then also in the fall, we plan on having a public open house and providing a status update to the, to the public on this project. Moving on to 68th Avenue. This project is proposed to be fully funded through the walkways and waterways bond measure. As you can see, like Juanita Drive, its estimated completion date is between 2020 and 2023. We've been using a firm called KPFF to begin the design work, and they plan on having 30% design in the fall of 2017. And at that time, they'll also have a public open house to get feedback from the public on that. Not to be confused with walkways and waterways, the 202nd Avenue sidewalk project is about to begin. There's been some preliminary work by utility companies already, but the contractor is expected to begin construction next week on 202nd Area, which is the main arterial that 68th Avenue turns into. That's not a walkways and waterways project, but much of the public might, might think it is, because it is on that main arterial that was defined in the walkways and waterways project. 202nd Avenue will get us improved public sidewalks to Kenmore Junior High and improve that intersection as well. And that's largely grant-funded. If there aren't any questions about the project's schedules and status, I would like to turn some time over to Joanne Gregory to talk about the financial piece and how the bonds have been issued. But it looks like-
I have a question.
Councilmember, yeah, it looks like there might be some questions about the projects.
So I just had a comment on the presentation. It seems like it would at least have helped me to understand it under estimated cost for each of these areas, like the next line, say, bond-funded portion. Because I tried to make those add up to anywhere near the bond, and I just couldn't. And I could, it was obvious after a while that it was multiple projects all combined, and that wasn't exactly your goal here, to define how we're using the bond money. But that might just add some clarity. Here's the total cost of the project. Here's the part that'll come from the bond. Does that make sense?
Yeah, definitely. I can tell you that all but, all but Juanita Drive are 100% bond-funded.
Well, the part on 202nd isn't either.
That's, that's not a walkways and waterways project.
Right. But that's, that's why, when I look at this, I was thinking walkways and waterways. And because it's a mixture of different projects, I just found it a little hard to put the pieces together. So that might, just that little piece would sort of define, oh, this doesn't have anything to do with the walkways and waterways.
Okay.
Councilmember Herbig.
So I know we've gone over this before, but I've forgotten because it's been a while. Can you remind me what side of the street this, we're looking at for sidewalks in, in both of those two segments?
Yeah, on Juanita Drive, it'll be the east side for sidewalks and bike lanes in both directions. And on 68th Avenue, it will be on the west side. Although closer to the downtown, we're looking at doing sidewalks on both sides, including in front of North Shore Utility District.
And we had talked, I, I remember a few months ago, you'd brought up the sidewalk in front of NUD as a possible kind of early win. Is that still a possibility, or we're still looking at 2020?
Yeah, that, that section here closer to the downtown is looking at a, we are looking at what we're calling an early win. Officially, for the public's benefit, I'm still sticking to 2020 through 2023. I'm not changing that estimate.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Danuski.
I have a question and a comment. The question is, you mentioned 68th would be on the west side of the road, but once we get up to 202nd, doesn't it jump to the north side?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So we jump across the street right at the junior high intersection?
Yeah, to meet the current 202nd project, yeah.
Okay. And then just a comment from somebody who came to coffee with the council this last weekend. The people who live in the trail walk building that don't face the river, but they face right into Squire's, are very supportive of this, but they wanted to make sure that there was a buffer between their building and, and what gets developed. And they have a few big trees that they want to see stay. So I sent her to you. So just expect that, that building has some comments. I said this was a good time to get them to you.
Sure, and I'm, I'm very confident there's going to be a pretty good substantial buffer between where they are.
I thought that there would be, but I didn't have the drawing on my head, so.
Right. And there's a big line of cedars that were once planted right along a property line, and they're huge now, and-
I think that's probably what she was talking about.
Yeah, those will stay, yes.
Councilmember Curtis.
I think I've identified the source of my confusion. So the topic is walkways and waterways update, but then you have a bunch of projects that aren't walkways and waterways. So maybe if the title was walkways and waterways and other projects update. So then I would understand that this is more than just walkways and waterways. Does that make, make sense? I, I just could not make the pieces add up to the topic that I thought we were discussing. And like even when you talk about in paragraph one, it says Kenmore's Proposition 1 Walkway and Waterway is passed, blah, blah, and here's five projects, and it talks about 19.75 million, but then there's projects that aren't part of that. So this topic is bigger than walkways and waterways, and that's why the pieces don't add up.
Okay, I just want to be clear. Which projects are you talking about that are not part of walkways and waterways? Are you talking about?
Like 200th Street? I mean 200th Avenue? Isn't that the?
Yeah. That's not-
Isn't that in the same section called walkways and waterways?
Is that, is that described here in the council bill? I don't think it's in the council bill. It's just something I brought up verbally.
So it says walkways and waters is the subject, and then it says Rhododendron Park waterfront, and then it talks about Log Boom Park, and then it talks about Squire's Landing. Then it talks about Juanita Drive, then it talks about 68th.
Right.
And, okay, so the, the piece on 200th is not specifically called out?
Not in this document.
Okay.
Yeah, but it is a segment of the, so if you look here where the, um, this is where 202nd Grant-Funded Project is happening. And where construction is going to start next week. And that was a grant that we applied for and were awarded before Walkways and Waterways was approved by the voters. And so this, this is a piece of the overall arterial, but technically not part of Walkways and Waterways.
Now, the Rhododendron Park improvements are some of the dock things. Is that part of, that's, that's separate money? That's not part of Walkways and Waterways either?
Right, so, yeah, that's, that's an example of what you're talking about is, um, under Rhododendron Park, we mention, um, we mentioned the dock at Rhododendron Park, which is not part of Walkways and Waterways. And we mentioned the dock at Squire's Landing, which is not part of Walkways and Waterways. So, yeah, I can see why.
But I think just, you know, saying here's the estimated total cost, and here's the part that comes from the, the walkways and waterways would, would clarify, at least for me.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I don't think we've made a big enough deal about how good the city did with the, the whole public procedure. In the 12 years, almost 12 years I've been on this council, I've seen a tremendous improvement in the way we've invoked the opinion of the, of the citizens. And this was a perfect example of really reaching out to the public and getting input from them as to what they want. So many times, we have public meetings and, and all these proposals are on easels and poster boards and all that, and the train's running, and the impression that citizens get is, well, we can say what we want, but this is what we're going to get, that it's all set. And that definitely wasn't the case in this, and I don't think the citizens got that impression, that they were always part from, for the lengthy procedures of different public meetings and, and surveys and so on. The citizens had to realize that they were a big part of the plan, and I think that's good. It makes them part of the whole process, rather than a city government doing something for them or to them that they had no input in. So I think hats off to the whole city staff, the city manager, all the people working on this, and the council as well, for the job well done in presenting this to the public.
Yeah, and, you know, the, the citizens did grant us this funding. And it's really important that we be transparent and accountable to the public for that. So having this update to you tonight as part of that accountability, regular updates in our newsletters, having the public open houses in the fall, all of those things are ways we can stay accountable and transparent to the public. Speaking of that, I would like to give Joanne just a couple of minutes to talk about the financial side.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I thought there might be some interest in knowing, like, where's the money right now? And what did we do with it? So on that fateful day in December, when we issued the first series of bonds, we issued about, received about $9.8 million, which we spent over $100,000 on closing costs. So that first series, or tranche as they call it, was deposited into a segregated account in the local government investment pool. So it's in its own separate account, earning something less than 1% interest. But that's what the market's yielding right now. And to date, I totaled up what we've spent of our bond proceeds across all five projects, and we've spent $250,000. We also then began collecting tax revenues, as you know, with the first property tax bills that went out in 2017. So as of the end of May, we had received $662,000 worth of tax revenues solely as a result of this new tax measures, which are set aside in a special debt redemption fund. And on June 1st, we made our first interest payment. It was $137,000. So as you know, property taxes are generally paid, you know, twice a year. So in the fall, we'll get like the second half, and we'll have enough to make our big payment of principal and interest in December, and that is $999,000. So that is how, where the money has gone and where it's at at the moment and how it's being used. So periodically, in my financial reports to you, I'll let you know how those bond funds are being spent, because we have tried to time it so that we can, you know, spend down that first $9.7 million in the first three years before we anticipate the second issue in 2019.
Okay.
Yes.
Any questions? Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, so when, and, and I, I'm sure we went through this. I just don't recall what the answer was. But because we know that this is drawn out over almost 10 years to get to completion, and we know that the value of the dollar erodes through inflation, what do you calculate in your, on the financial side for the fact that construction, everything is going up at a significant- what do you calculate in your, on the financial side for the fact that construction, everything is going up at a significant rate every year? And how did how did that get factored into the the cost total of the projects? Is there a specific percentage that you use for an inflation index for those, or how does that work?
Well, I wasn't involved in costing the projects. Our consultant, Birkin Associates, prepared those cost estimates, and they used an inflationary factor of, I thought, about 3% to 5%.
I don't recall the percentage, but.
Intensity on top of that.
But, yeah, they did realize that these projects weren't going to be built until the 2020s, and so they built in cost increases over time.
Okay, because, yeah, just from a a practical standpoint, it really, it does put the, I mean, there is, since we have a set bond amount, it really does add a degree of urgency only if for no other reason that every year it goes by, it's that many, that much more expensive, and yet if it's that much more expensive, that means it's coming out of our general fund or our REIT dollars or something else.
Right.
Any other questions, comments? I have two comments. The first one is on our AAA bond rating. That's no small achievement, and I think we all ought to pat ourselves on the back and especially praise our finance director, Joanne Gregory, for managing our funds in such a way that we can get that AAA bond rating, which is is the best you can you can do. So I think it's a real feather in our cap. Not all cities can say they have that.
No, it's definitely something to be proud of, but certainly isn't due to me, so I.
Well, you're the quarterback of it.
I think it's the, you know, the fiscal policies of the council over time has gotten us to the position where we're at.
The whole city ought to be proud of it.
I, I, yes, I'm definitely proud for the city.
It really is. I had a question on Juanita Drive and the cycle lanes, the bike lanes. I've heard from several bicyclists that they're really afraid to ride down that that street, and that there's real risk there with all the traffic going up and down and and so on. Is there going to be a significant improvement in bicycle and pedestrian safety by these improvements? I hope so.
Yeah, I believe so, right. It'll, it'll, where there's no bike lane now on the northbound or downhill way, there will be a bike lane, and not only a bike lane, but a buffered bike lane.
Okay, okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Buffer or a barrier of any kind?
We're right now, we're just looking at striping it, striping the buffer. And it will be buffered on both sides, so two bike lanes, one on each side, both buffered. Yep.
Because the cyclists come roaring down there and so do the cars, and it's it's pretty dangerous the way it is, so.
Where it gets tricky is when the cars are stacking up at a light, and then a car is trying to turn out onto Juanita or off of Juanita, and a bike lane's coming down quickly, passing all the stacked cars, and that's where you can get what they call a hook and catch the cyclist. So that's that's always going to be a challenge, but we need to be able to try to address that as well.
Okay, do you need any action from the council on this tonight?
No, this is just an accountability update.
Well, thank you very much for sharing it with us and and keeping us and the citizens informed of the progress. Next item is the Hanger Building Facility Use and Policies. Rob Kerlinsy, City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. So, the downtown, it's been a goal for this city for many, many years. In fact, one of the first orders of business after cityhood was, hey, let's try to create our own sense of place or our own downtown. And so soon after the city became a city, that the then city council appointed Citizen Task Force to create a downtown plan. And I wasn't here at the time, but I understand that it was a ton of work by by many, many people. And I think some of you may have even been on that task force before you were even on the council. And in 2003, the city council adopted a downtown plan based on the work of all those citizens and really created this quadrant. It divides the downtown into four quadrants, but this quadrant in particular, where City Hall is and where Kenmore Village is, got special attention and really got designated as what I call the bull's eye of our downtown, in particular, this intersection right here. And the downtown plan talked about private sector reinvestment, but it also talked about public sector investment. And it envisioned, the plan envisioned kind of a civic complex where you'd have a new city hall, a new library, and a community center, all in one package right here in this quadrant. Well, those three components have materialized, but maybe not exactly how the downtown plan envisioned. We have a new city hall, or I should say newish now, it's eight years old now. We have a seven-year-old, no, the city hall's seven, library's six years old. And we are getting our own version of a of a community center, what we're now calling the Hanger Building. And they're not all, those three components aren't in one civic complex, but they have materialized in their own organic way here in our downtown. And when I was hired back in 2012, we had Kenmore Village. And the city had acquired about nine and a half acres of Kenmore Village a few years prior to my arrival. And we went through a community process in 2012 to ask the citizens what they wanted to see in our downtown, and in particular, what they wanted to see with Kenmore Village. And we had, again, we had meetings with the public, town halls, open houses. We even had an outdoor expert panel come. So we had real estate and investment experts come, and we met out here in this parking lot right out in front of the old, I don't know what it was, the liquor store or whatever it was. And we had quite a, it was a nice, warm, sunny July day, and we had a great panel of experts come and talk, and the citizens got to ask questions. Long story short, based on all that out, that input, we came up with a positioning statement to get Kenmore Village ready to take to the market. And just to refresh everybody's memories, here's what the positioning statement said. "Kenmore Village is a walkable place with a public square where Kenmore area residents and workers can meet their daily needs and see one another face to face." So that was our positioning statement that we used when we marketed the properties for sale. Now, I'm going to fast forward because we all know what's happened since then. We've had Main Street Property Group, Kenmore Camera purchase and develop property here. And Main Street Property Group has reported that their investment in Kenmore Village is approaching $100 million. So that's a pretty significant private sector investment for what we're calling the the bull's eye. Kenmore Camera, as you know, purchased one and a half acres back in 2013 and opened for for their relocated business there. They tripled their square footage in 2014. But the city decided to keep that prime corner of Kenmore Village for the public. And we decided to call it initially the Town Green, but that name evolved into the Town Square because there wasn't enough green on it to call it the Town Green because of the way the design evolved. But we also decided to try to create a a community gathering space that was year round. Town Greens and Town Squares, the outdoor components, they're great, they're wonderful. But in our climate, they don't get you that year round gathering experience. So with, using mostly the dollars from the sale of the properties, along with some grant funding obtained by our state legislators, state legislators, we were able to build not only the Town Square, but also what we're now calling the Hanger Community Building. Now, why are we calling it the Hanger? It's because of the the seaplane theme that we have in our city. And the building even has a hanger-like door that opens up onto the Town Square. And just to have a little more fun with that theme, there are two gathering spaces that the citizens will be able to reserve. And we're proposing, just an idea, but we're proposing to call those two spaces the Beaver Room and the Otter Gathering Area. And I should have had a floor plan, but the the Otter is that larger space with the two-sided fireplace, and the Beaver is the multipurpose conference room. Beaver, Otter, those are the names of the the dehablins that the that they use at Kenmore Air. Otter is the bigger plane, Beaver is the smaller plane, so the smaller room is the Beaver, bigger room is the Otter. If if you think that's not a great idea to call them the Beaver and the Otter, we can give them more generic names or maybe name them after the natural health food sector or something like that. But just to spread the wealth of our themes throughout the city. But to give you a status update on where we're at with the Town Square and and the Hanger Building, the Town Square is complete and ready for public use. In fact, next week, on June 28th, we're going to have our first big event at the Town Square. We're going to have movies at the square kickoff the night of Wednesday, June 28th. And the first movie that we're going to play is?
The Secret Life of Pets.
The Secret Life of Pets. And we were able to get some pretty new release type movies, including Beauty and the Beast. And there are a lot of cities that do movies in the park, and they didn't know if Beauty and the Beast was going to be released in time for the summer, so so they didn't go with it. But we waited, we waited, and we got Beauty and the Beast. So we're the only city that we know of that's going to be showing Beauty and the Beast this summer, so. Anyway, so Town Square is doing well, and it'll definitely be a more active space once we get the Hanger up and running, and also when we get the rest of Kenmore Village up and running, including the Link and the Mixed Use Building that Main Street's proposing to build in between the Link and the Town Square. And then also the the Restaurant Pad. And I believe that on July 10th, we're going to be coming to you with Main Street's latest thinking on the Restaurant Pad, which is on the west side of the Town Square, and also their commercial building. And I'm going to be, they just turned in a set of plans, I think today. And tomorrow, me and my team are going to be going going over this, that set of plans and see what they're proposing. So bringing us now to the Hanger Building. Our portion of the Hanger is complete, but our retail tenant, Diva Espresso, is now in the midst of constructing their indoor tenant improvements. And framing on their improvements is supposed to start this week, and so they're making good progress. I understand that they've obtained their liquor license for beer and wine. And of course, they have the city building permits, and they expect to be done with construction at the end of July. And so what we're thinking of is a, the big block party ribbon cutting grand opening event in the second half of August, tentatively, we're thinking August 19th or the 26th, one of those two dates. So that'll that'll be a pretty big bash. Yes, Councilmember.
Sorry, just a thought there, you said it'd be opening in late August. The night, sorry, the Kenmore, the the Night Out that we do every year is going to be falling on the 1st of August? Just an idea, maybe smash the two together and make it into one big thing.
National Night Out and the the.
People already coming out, just move the location over there and set up some barbecues. I don't know, I'm just tossing ideas out there, but.
Yeah, it's, I think it's cutting a little close because the tenant says they'll be done at the end of July. And I don't, you know, how things like that go. But that's not a bad idea, that's a good idea. But in order for the Hanger Building to be ready, we need lots of things to be in place. And I think chief among which is a facility use policy, and so that's what in front, what's in front of you tonight. I'm not asking you to vote on this tonight, but for us to just go over it and see if we're headed in the right direction on the facility use policy.
Before we, before we go there, are there any comments on the design and what we've presented so far here? Councilmember Curtis?
So I I like the idea of the Beaver and the Otter. I was, I could even figure it out without footnotes or anything, what it was referring to, and I thought it was kind of clever, and so I liked it.
Oh, good.
I do have some comments on the policy once we get to.
Okay.
Presentation.
My first thought with the Beaver and Otter, we were talking about the Beavers chewing on the trees down at Swan Creek. So I was thinking the actual animals, and maybe in the rooms, we could have a mural, a picture on the wall of an otter and the one and the beaver and the other.
Of the sea, actual seaplanes or the animals?
Pictures of the, oh, the planes. Because it's a hanger, you're going to have the beaver hanging in the in the main area. Well, the beaver's in the otter room.
That's a good point. Yeah, it is.
The big, the big model is a beaver, right?
It is, yeah.
Yeah? Well, I don't know what to do with Beaver as far as selling it, but Otter, it ought to be fun.
The, I think, but also using the natural piece of it too, because the Beaver and the Otter. And we're, we have some art coming into the Hanger Building, including some Native American Indian art. And we have a, we have a canoe paddle that's coming in, and on the paddle is carved the depiction of a beaver. And we were going to put that in the otter room before we called it the otter room, but I think it now needs to go in the beaver room. So we'll still figure all that out. Yes, yes.
We definitely have both of those animals here, because the otters, believe it or not, come all the way up from the lake and chew on my fish.
That's right. In your koi pond, yeah.
Oh, Councilmember Irving.
So when we were first talking about, excuse me, first thing about making the space available, reservable by folks, I thought we were just talking about the little meeting room. I didn't realize we were talking about the bigger public area, and in here, we talk about the, we're talking about how we want to keep the areas around the fireplace still available for public who's coming and going. How do we think that's going to work out if you have kind of a group of people monopolizing a chunk of that public area, but public use happening elsewhere? I mean, I don't know, I just, I'm not sure how that exactly is going to work work out in that big public area to have part of it kind of monopolized by a group.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's the policy, but how's it going to work out in real life is what I.
Before I answer that question, can I kind of, give a little intro to the policy first and then get into things like that? So one of the main reasons for the Hanger Building is to create that year round public use and also to help realize the positioning statement that we made back in 2012, which is Kenmore Village is a walkable place with a public square where Kenmore residents can work and workers can meet their daily needs and see one another face to face. So we're going to have Diva Espresso in there as our tenant. They're going to be taking up about 1,100 square feet of the 4,600 square feet. They'll have their own seating area, but their customers will also be welcome to pour into the rest of the Hanger. Diva will be providing coffee, of course, and other beverages, ice cream, some baked goods, and then beer and wine in the evenings. And beer and wine is a new thing for them. They have six or seven chains in the Seattle area, and none of them offer beer and wine, but through our insistence, they're going to give it a try. And like I said, they have their liquor license. And so there's, there's that, balancing the needs of the the tenant. But then we also want to really help realize that positioning statement, and we want to maximize the use of the space and make it really easy to use. We want to make it really easy for the public to use. And so we wanted a reservation system, because our, because the citizens of Kenmore have already paid for this, we wanted a reservation system that was just really streamlined, really easy to use. You may notice that we're not requiring deposits. We're not requiring that they provide insurance. It's free space, because we just want them to know they can come and use the space as their third place. Third place, meaning first place is their home, second place is work, but this is their third place. And so we wanted to make it as easy as as possible for them to do that. And so that's kind of the guiding underlying principle we used, was just to maximize the public use of this space that's been paid for by the public. So just to run through some really key points, we have, and this should go without saying, but we, the very first thing in our policy is a policy of non-discrimination. All users of the Hanger. All users of the Hangar and its premises agree not to exclude anyone, any any one participation in, deny anyone the benefit of, or otherwise subject anyone to discrimination because of their race, gender, color, creed, national origin, religion, marital status, age, sexual orientation, political affiliation or sensory, mental or physical disability. And so we want everybody to feel welcome and comfortable regardless of what their background is. And like I said, we want to make it available for the public. There may be times where we make the space just free-for-all space where it's not reservable. We want to play that by ear and see how the space works. Also, the tendency when we were coming up with this policy was for us to come up with all these what-if scenarios, well, what if this happens and what if that happens? And and we did a great job of those, but we we realized that because we're new at this, we couldn't guess all the what-ifs. And we decided to create a policy as best we can. We looked at other cities and what they do for their community center policies. We based a lot of it on what our city hall, our city hall policy is. But rather than getting into all the what-if scenarios and try to ride about and guard against any, every possible risk, we decided to go with the policy based on what we've seen in other cities, including our own. And let me, Councilmember Herbert, I am not forgetting your question, but I just want to go through just a couple more points. If you go to page two of the policy, we're saying that groups of 10 or more need to reserve space, and if they're less than 30 people, they need to give us three days working notice, three working days advance notice, and we'll have an online reservation system for that. And then groups of 30 or more will need to give us 35 days' notice. Why so many days' notice? Because our tenant wants to provide good customer service and wants to be able to serve the people well, and our tenant, and as we negotiated in their lease, wants 30 days' advance notice of larger groups. And so we're asking folks that want to reserve the space with larger groups to give us 35 days' advance notice. A little further down on page three, actually still towards the top, we are saying that reservations may be made no sooner than six months in advance. The rest of the policy is pretty self-explanatory when it talks about setup and takedown and decorations and display materials. Page five, we're prohibiting things that are already illegal. When it comes to alcohol, we're saying no alcohol unless, it's already been, let's see, where is that?
Page six.
Page six. It says unless, unless approved by a city sanctioned event and except as provided in the tenant's lease agreement, no alcohol will be allowed in the Hangar.
Can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
For the, I don't know how the licensing works on that, but does does that mean if somebody has a glass of wine or beer, they have to drink within that designated area within Diva's specific zone, or do they have access to the entire Hangar Building and/or even out onto that patio?
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that question. I know that Diva will need to comply with their liquor license permit, and my guess at the answer to that question is that they'll need to stay within that area, but I I don't know for sure. Is it okay if I try to address Councilmember Herbert's question?
Sure.
So, yeah, we we discussed that, and that open area is a big area, but if, for instance, they, somebody wants to have a ballet recital or violin recital or something like that, they'll need to be able to say they've got the space reserved. And so there'll be a way to kind of coordinate off and, you know, put chairs and a and a temporary, what do you call the, temporary rope, just to kind of coordinate off and say this space is reserved this evening. So we we definitely want the different groups to be able to use it, whether it's Toastmasters or your local violin teacher or whatever, and they want, we want them to be able to know that they have the space right there in that center area. They also need to recognize, though, that the public still gets to come and go in and out of the building and walk by the fireplace and go to Diva and and all that, so.
Yeah, Councilmember Dineshki is first.
Yeah, I have some of the same concerns on the renting of the whole big public space. We could end up definitely hurting some feelings if there's people sitting around and then all of a sudden people are kicking them out, and that's not going to feel very welcoming. So I guess in my mind, I thought we were just renting out kind of a performance area and then anybody could sit and watch it. So I guess I'm, I don't know, I'm thinking on how that's going to work, and hopefully we can make it fair for everybody, and I I'd hate, I guess, to, you know, have 10 chairs at Diva and then nobody else can come in because there's a ballet recital. So balancing all that, I guess, is something to make sure that we do.
I I feel the same way you do, so I I want to make sure we're writing the policy that way. So I, what we want is if there's a violin recital or something, we want the public to feel welcome to come in and sit down and listen to it, and we don't want to create an exclusive feeling that, nope, your your kid isn't one of the kids playing in this violin recital, so you can't enjoy it. We want the public to be able to come and sit down and enjoy it as well.
I think by saying you're renting the whole space, in my mind, meant that nobody but those people can use those tables and chairs and area, and that might be sending the wrong message. Maybe we're, maybe we want to say that they were renting a performance space. There's no stage there, is there?
There's no stage, but there's a projector screen, and and where that projector screen is kind of where people would be performing or talking or whatever. The, what we're going to have is the collapsible, foldable, plastic tables and chairs that people will bring out to set up, and so that will kind of delineate the performance area when we have the the tables and chairs set up.
Okay, and maybe just really making it, you know, crystal clear to whoever's renting that they can't be kicking people out, and anybody can come and sit, and making just that really crystal clear, and then I guess we'll see how it works.
And maybe we can add some language to this reflecting that.
Because I I can just see people saying, hey, I rented this whole thing, all you guys out of there, and so, I don't know, that's my worry.
Okay. I think one thing we can do is the day of the event, well, we're definitely going to have signage that says, okay, here's, here's where the, what spaces are reserved and when, but we might even have like a a stand-up sign that says, Mrs. Jones violin recital tonight at 7:00.
Yeah, maybe even a setup at 6:30 or some, something so people are just maybe not bronzed, blind-sighted on that. Thanks.
Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So Rob, I I I guess I kind of thought we were kind of going along the lines of third place, the one in Lake Forest Park.
Yeah.
And so I didn't actually pick up on the idea of renting out the 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 hole or the the bigger space. I was just thinking we were talking about room reservations. So a couple of things. One is, can you, do you recall the size or the capacity of the the whole space? Like, what what would be, I mean, obviously, it's been inside and it's big, but 100 people, I mean, what are we talking for the capacity of the building?
For that Otter space?
Well, okay, maybe I'm, maybe I'm a little bit confused. I thought we had two meeting rooms, but that's not the case. We just have the one.
We do, we have the 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 little conference room, and I I should have had a floor plan up for you guys tonight.
For some reason, I guess, I got lost with all the Otters and the Beavers.
Yeah, there's the, there's the, what, we call the multipurpose room, but it's really looks more like a conference room.
The one with the glasses adjoining the rest of the space. Okay, so which one is that, then?
That's the Beaver.
Okay, and then what are we considering in the Otter space?
The Otter, the Otter space is where the the cabinets are.
Oh, so it's not a defined room, but that's what we're talking about, being able to reserve that?
Mm-hmm.
Interesting, okay. So I guess a couple of thoughts there. One is, one of the things that I think is is so great about the third place is, you know, when you do have those performances, I mean, obviously, it's a little different because they have their stage and all that, but it just adds, you know, it just adds. You hear the music, or you hear the singing, or you see the dancing.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and they they even give them lessons, and you can learn how to dance, which I've never done, but anyway. So to me, I would, I mean, that seems like to me more of the feel that I was going for.
Me too.
Okay, so I guess the question becomes, how do we get there and adapt and adjust it?
Yeah, we, we're modeling this out of after third place.
Excellent, okay.
I just think that if if a violin teacher is going to have a recital, he or she is going to want to know that they've got some space, that they can put some chairs out.
Yeah, I understand.
And they got to know they can have some chairs to put out and kind of a defined space, but we definitely want the public to come and go and enjoy and sit and listen and.
Maybe one of the clarifications kind of goes back to the numbers question I had, you know, like what, is there a maximum number of people that, you know, could be accommodated in that type of performance and still give plenty of that, you know, casual observers can come and listen, people can, you know, be a part of the, just getting their coffee and and all that. So that might be kind of an interesting.
Yeah.
Exercise to look at that.
Sure.
Councilmember Curtis?
I'd several comments, starting with intended uses for the Hangar include the following. I know it it may sound kind of sloppy, but I think it's actually helpful here, maybe to put something like, here, we include but not limited to the following. So these are some ideas, but other creative ideas might come up as well.
Sure.
Just to give people that freedom. And and the other thing, we keep using the word rental, but I haven't heard anything about rental fees, so really it's a reservation, it's not a rental. And I don't know if it was really clear in here, but if we say the Otter Room is kind of like from the fireplace north up to those cabinets, that would give them people the ability to walk on the other side of the fireplace, get in around, out the big doors, so you could kind of cycle around this little, you know, kind of more defined Otter space. And then people could still get into the Beaver Room if they had it reserved at the same time the Otter space was was rented. So I think, I don't know if it was clear in here that the Otter is like the whole west end of the building, and I don't think it should be. I think it should only be up as far as the fireplace.
Correct, yeah.
And then the last thing, one of my personable, personal aggravations, right at the bottom, it says maximum room capacity, says maximum room capacities are posted in the Hangar. I hate policies where you have to go somewhere else to figure out what the policy says.
Yeah.
So even if it says, as of this date, it's put something, and it can always be changed, but at least people don't have to go somewhere to get an idea what size they're talking about.
Good point, yep.
And that's all mine.
Councilmember Sperry?
Does anybody else want to speak first, or?
Yeah, Councilmember Smith?
If we're, since you're going to be writing clarification language about the openness of the Otter Room, then I think you might want to at least address whether it is the same or different for the Beaver Room. I realize the Beaver is closed off, but still, if you, since we're going to address where the public is or is not allowed to be for our reservation, then I think it's reasonable that we address, because they will have different, I assume there will be a little bit of a difference there.
Big, big difference, yeah.
Right, one has a closed door and one doesn't.
Yeah, so the the Beaver is definitely where somebody can have more of a private meeting. It could be a a financial services advisor that wants to meet with a couple of her clients. Obviously, the public won't get to come and go through that discussion, so that that has sliding glass doors that they'll be able to close, so.
Okay, before we go around round two, I have a couple of questions. In your policy statement, you list all those discrimination possibilities, and in our discrimination, or what was that? What would we call that document we came up with a couple of months ago? And we eliminated all the possible ways that we could discriminate or should not discriminate in fear of that we would leave one out, and that may be the case here, just we won't discriminate, period.
Oh.
And do we need to, we need to list them all, because there may be some way we might discriminate, that somebody might consider discrimination that we hadn't thought of?
Yeah, if you want, we can go to that welcoming city resolution and use similar language.
Similar language, I would think would be proper. Food and drink outside sources, or do people using the the space or reserving the space for an event have to use Diva's stuff?
No, yeah, Diva does not have a monopoly.
So they could come in and have a pizza parlor in there, eats and soft drinks.
Right.
And bring it all in themselves.
Yep.
If somebody has a reservation for a piano recital, for example, they would probably want it quiet in there. Is there any way that we can encourage other people that are in there observing to respect what's going on in the recital or whatever?
So that's a.
The last thing you want is a whole bunch of people drinking and and laughing it up, and they're trying to have a serious violin recital.
So that's kind of a what-if scenario that we decided to wait and just see how it plays out. These, those are types of scenarios that we can adjust the rules if we have to later on, but my expectation is that the the renter needs to know that the public's going to be there, and they're going to be coming and going and congregating and laughing even while that event is happening, and and that expectation needs to be made clear. Also.
Yeah, there could be some some reminders in signage to be courteous of other things that are going on, and respectful, I guess, when when somebody has reserved the space for a particular purpose. I don't know, if if you can't, if you can't guarantee that it's going to be a civilized situation for your recital, then maybe you just don't want to go there.
Yeah, and I think that's a a risk the the music teacher, for example, is going to have to take. They're going to have to know that it's a public space. So I have been talking to a couple of music teachers that are excited for the space and are anxious for its opening, yeah.
Have the acoustics be, been designed into this for sound and so on?
Mm-hmm.
Have you studied that?
Yeah.
Because I always marvel at these old cathedrals, that they knew nothing about the science of acoustics, but somehow they get it right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you. So I did have a couple of thoughts on the reservations. One is, so at this point, we're saying, you know, no charge. Are we limiting this to Kenmore residents?
That's a great question, and I'd love to have your direction on that. The.
Well, I do have a thought.
Yeah.
As I usually do. How about Kenmore residents, since they paid for it, they get it free, and non-Kenmore residents get to contribute to the upkeep of the building? In other words, they get to pay a fee.
Uh-huh, yeah, you could do that.
That's what we do in City Hall, isn't it?
I think so. I don't know what we do on the City Hall.
Well, Kenmore residents get to use City Hall once a month for free.
Mm-hmm, and that that actually leads perfectly to what I was going to suggest on limitations on booking the space. And I did check the library, what they do, because they, you know, have similar thing where they have the meeting rooms. They do, once a month is the limit, and the maximum in advance is actually 12 weeks. And for the meeting room, for the smaller one, that might be kind of nice because you want to have turnover. You don't want, oh, yeah, that we have a meeting room, but it's booked six months in advance and I can't get into it. Now, obviously, you're, what what we've been discussing previously about, you know, more recitals and all that, they would need a a longer lead time, but perhaps for the smaller room, you know, just keeping it a little more open where people can't reserve it for a whole year. But I thought the month part, you know, that seems pretty good to me.
What was the month part? What do you mean by that?
Sure, so the limitation, you can't just go in there and book it every day. It's, so basically, you would have, say, I wanted to rent the the room for some group, then I could rent it once a month, or I guess I wouldn't have to rent it because I live here, but anyway, I could reserve the room. Again, I'm talking about the smaller, the Beaver Room.
Yeah.
The meeting room, I could do it once a month, and I could do it up to 12 weeks in advance, with basically three months. So, I mean, that's the library policy right now.
So you'd like to do that same policy for the Beaver?
I think it, it sounds like it's working pretty good, and I like the idea, I'm not saying it has to be exactly that way, but I like that idea because it gives the smaller groups and the people that want to have the private meeting space more opportunity, basically, to use it. but I like that idea because it gives the smaller groups and the people that wanna have the private meeting space more opportunity, basically, to use it.
So that's up to 12 weeks in advance reserving it, and no more than once a month? Can we talk about the-
Councilmember Danuski?
Okay.
Something else?
I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Sperry's, on the Kenmore charging for non-residents versus residents. I'm, I have an opinion on it, but I don't have a strong opinion. My thought was, we wanna just maximize the number of people to come to our downtown. We're just trying to get people to come down to our downtown, and just make it simple and easy to administer. So my thought was to not differentiate based on residency. And maybe it's just because I have a bad memory from my past, where I was at Furcrest Swimming Pool when I was working in University Place. And every, every day at like noon, somebody would come around and say, "Okay, all non-residents, get out of here." And so, we were allowed to stay until noon, but at noon, we all had to get up and leave, and I was just like, I just got a bad taste in my mouth for that city back then, because we were kicked out, because we're non-residents. Anyway-
You worked there, but you weren't a resident.
No, I was working for the next-door city, but, anyway, so one thought is just to maximize the number of people, and just keep it easy to administer, and don't differentiate. The other side of the coin, though, is, hey, our citizens paid for this, they should be able to use it, and those who didn't pay for it should have to pay a fee. So, I would like your direction on that.
Any priorities on that? Would citizens have priority if somebody else wanted it at the same time?
I think it'd still be first come, first served, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Danuski?
Okay, so on your question right now, I'm fine with keeping it open to anyone, because that'll make it more interesting for Kenmore residents to see. And if we end up just being crazy overbooked at some time, we can revisit it, and, you know, maybe change it to non-residents pay. But to start it out, it might be good to just kinda keep it open and see what happens. So that's kind of my thought on that one. And then I just had a question on the beer and wine permit. I haven't been in the building, so I don't really have a good sense of its space, but how, how much seating is around the Diva area that would be just Divas? Because if it's only like two or three tables, and that's the only place you could have beer and wine, then nobody's gonna get beer and wine, because they'll just be-
Right, it's more than two or three tables. I'll get you a floor plan that'll show you how the seating is. It's a pretty good amount of seating for Diva.
Okay, and then it, you know, because if there's not, maybe there's a way to open that up to, you know, have their permit be the whole inside of the building, but, just a thought.
Okay.
Councilmember Curtis?
So my thought on the who can use it is initially just let everybody in, because you just want it to be full and active. And then, as it gets busier and busier and busier, the little bit of money you make from charging people is probably not worth the hassle of administering it. So I would just say at some point, you just eliminate people outside the city. If it gets so busy with Kenmore people, that that's all we can serve. So I'd keep it open to everybody, and at some point, limited as you need to. And then I had another unrelated comment on the maximum room capacity, so we'd put both the Beaver capacity and the Otter capacity.
Right, yeah.
Councilmember Smith?
I think that I understand this, but I have a question regarding the Beaver Room. If, if it is not reserved, can anybody go and just use it with their friends or group or whatever?
Yeah, and they'll be able to look at the daily schedule and say, "Oh, is it reserved right now? Oh, I can just go in, yeah." And same with both rooms.
Okay, thanks.
In fact, when the, especially the Otter, when that's not reserved, we just want the public just to use it and enjoy it, so.
Now-
Okay, okay.
If I have a group, and I'm the only resident of the city, the other participants don't all have to be residents of the city, do they? Just the person reserving it?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you. I was thinking about what you were saying about the Otter space, and it might be that you may wanna consider having perhaps evening, or just certain times when that would be available. You know, because you're obviously gonna have busier times during the day, where you just want it to be open. So rather than, you know, somebody being able to reserve it, maybe a way to consider it. I forgot how long, I know we had discussed a lot with Diva about doing evening hours, and I, I don't recall where we landed with that. Was that just for special events, and maybe Fridays and Saturdays?
Right, yeah, so they're gonna be open until 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and then on Sunday, I can't remember, seven, six, yeah. And so we're saying, "Hey, public, you can use the space, reserve it to match Diva hours." We may wanna have an event, the city may wanna have a sponsored event that goes past that. If we do, and we wanna include, and we want Diva to be part of it, we need to give Diva 30 days' notice. If they're not part of the event, they're just gonna be able to close up their area, and be closed for the evening. Another idea we'd like to explore, but we're taking things one step at a time, and we decided not to explore it now, or we decided not to implement it now, is create a way for the space to be used outside of Diva hours, but without being an additional cost to the city. And so, and one idea we're thinking about is recruiting and training volunteer stewards of the Hangar Building. People who could be trained how to, you know, clean up the building, put things away, lock, unlock, that type of thing. And they could then volunteer to be stewards of the Hangar Building outside Diva hours. But, that's an idea we have kind of tossing around right now, but we haven't fully thought that through, so that's not part of this yet.
Well, I think with the eight o'clock, I mean, for most, you know, evening events, it's probably gonna be seven to nine or so. So I could see where that extra hour might make a difference. And so, especially if it was something large, like a recital or something, or where there was something, it seems like there might be some negotiation with Diva, if it'd be worth maybe them to stay open that extra hour, or something like that. But I can see where that might be a bit of a limit, you know, which is fine in the beginning. But what I'm trying to say is, basically, for an evening event, it's not gonna work unless, unless there's a longer hour. Unless somebody came in at five, like a five to eight, or something like that, but-
Yeah, I agree with you. I would like to find a way to push that so it can stay open till nine. In our negotiations with Diva, we pushed hard for 10 o'clock closing, but they said, "No, we're not gonna make money that late at night." So, they, for them, it was a stretch to close at eight. But yeah, I would like to create some sort of a mechanism where the public can stretch that hour to nine o'clock, maybe even 10.
Anybody else?
Yep.
Compared to their other stores, they're not, they're not selling ice cream, they're not selling beer and wine.
Yeah.
They're different items that they're selling.
Yeah.
That, I mean, people don't like to drink coffee all night long, or most people don't. So it's a morning kind of a thing for most people.
Yep.
Huh? Isn't it? I don't know, it's been a long time for me.
One more question.
I don't know.
One more, one here.
Okay, I'll come back. Go ahead.
No, no.
Councilmember, well, on, what was I gonna do, on the time, they may find that, that business is good with these other things that they're selling in the evenings.
Yeah.
And a nice, warm evening, hey, they may, they may run out of ice cream. And they may stock up with ice cream the next time, and say, "Open till 10 o'clock," you know?
Right.
People milling around, so, who knows? I also had a question about the artwork in the square, and you and I had a conversation about it. I think we've put it on hold for now. But I think we all ought to be thinking about what we, what we might like to have there. And I had an idea that we'd have a bronze sculpture of a bench with a bronze caricature of Hank Heron, with his arm on the back of the bench like this, and people could sit down and get their picture taken with Hank. I think that might be kinda cool.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
So, Councilmember Danuski?
Okay, I'm sure you've thought about this, but we're gonna have some kind of place on the website somewhere, where people can see what the whole schedule of programming is, because, yeah.
Mm-hmm, we will. I don't even have to turn and look at Leslie for that.
I knew you thought of that.
Anything else? Councilmember Sperry?
So I had two people in the space of a week say, "And what's gonna, what's that building?"
Yeah.
And I thought, huh, you know, we've lived it, breathed it, known about it for years. But I'm guessing a lot of people are going, "What's that building? I wonder what's gonna be there." So can we help them know that before it actually happens?
Yeah, we just talked about that the other day, Leslie's working on some signage for that, yeah. We see a lot of people looking in the windows, you know. We need to have a little sign. Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Do that, too. Okay, this is an exciting topic, and we've got a lot of questions and comments about it.
Yeah.
Can't wait for things to open.
So, yeah, I'm glad I had this conversation with you, and I've got lots of good notes that we'll incorporate. If we incorporate these notes, then you feel like we're headed in the right direction. It is that third-place books atmosphere I'm trying to create. So I definitely don't wanna create this sense of exclusivity about the space. It's gonna be kind of a loose-tight scenario, because we don't wanna create a sense of exclusivity, but the person who's reserving the space is gonna wanna know that they've got so much space that they can have their audience come to. So, that'll be a balancing act that we'll fine-tune as we use the space, so.
Yeah, I think some tactful signs when something's going on, saying, "Hey, event is happening, please be courteous."
Yeah, and one other update is, just a second, I gotta make sure I write that down. One other update is, the budget calls for a full-time maintenance custodian position. And you may recall that we used to have a full-time custodian, and then we, when we lost that person, we decided to contract it out for a while. But the budget allows us to bring back that person. And that person is gonna run back and forth between the Hangar and City Hall. And they're gonna start about 12:30 in the afternoon, and they're gonna work until about 9:00 PM every day. And then we'll have a part-time person on the weekends. Actually, the full-time person is going to be, I believe, Tuesday through Saturday. The full-time person's gonna be Tuesday through Saturday, and the full-time person is gonna be Sunday, I mean, the part-time person's gonna be Sunday and Monday. And same schedule, 12:30 to 9:00. So that person will be able to help with rentals and setups here at City Hall, but they'll also be able to help with setups and rentals at the Hangar Building. And we've gone through recruitment, and we're about to make a conditional offer to someone for that, for that position. And then right after that, we'll make a decision on hiring the weekend person.
Okay, Councilmember Smith?
Do you know what time the Hangar will be opening in the morning?
Same time as Diva, which is 6:00 AM, yeah.
Anybody else?
And in the mornings, when we don't have our custodians, we'll have our maintenance worker, Quinn Prophet, that he'll open up, he'll come every morning and do a sweep of the Town Square and Hangar, you know, empty garbage cans, and just check things out, to make sure things are looking good. And then they'll be available throughout that morning if there's issues, so.
Yeah, I have, I have some concerns about the only can reserve it once a month. There may be situations where somebody wants to meet weekly with a group, or bimonthly, or every other, twice a month. And I think that ought to be based on availability. If there's empty space, why not let them use it more than once? But, but that would be a last-minute kind of a thing.
You know, maybe to help with this conversation, if you go to page three, third paragraph, it says, "The city encourages maximum public use of the facility. Except for city-sponsored events, individuals or groups may not monopolize any space within the Hangar with or without reservations." So, we have some language in here discouraging monopolization, and, and talking about if groups wanna reserve the space multiple times at a consistent date and time, that they require city approval.
I'm thinking, well, I guess it would be, maybe a city function, if you had once a week, a coffee with council once a week, and have different topics, or specific topics of certain ones during the month. I can easily see that you could keep that place busy once a week with two, three hours in the morning, or in the evening, or whatever. But that would be a city function, rather than an individual one, probably.
Uh-huh, yeah. I, when I was in Gig Harbor, I know of a space where the local Chamber of Commerce had a civic meeting weekly, every Thursday morning, and they had a good turnout every Thursday morning.
That could be, that's what-
Yeah, so just for clarification, we have the six-month advance notice, no sooner than six months for reserving space for the Otter. But I heard Councilmember Sperry say for the Beaver, no sooner than 12 weeks in advance, and no more than once per month?
You know, we haven't really gotten a sense of where everybody else-
Why would it be different between the rooms?
There are not two rooms. One, remember, the Otter is the space, the large space.
I know they're separate spaces, but why, why different, I mean, it might be confusing.
Sure, well, what I was thinking was, the smaller space, smaller meeting, you know, making it so lots of different groups and different people could use it. So I was thinking more in terms of accessibility.
If I may add something on that, yeah, one of the things, when I think of that smaller room, I could, and that's why I appreciate your comments about on somebody monopolizing that, because I could see that, you know, somebody could get into a habit where, you know, maybe it's a local businessperson of whatever nature, and all of a sudden, there, it's one o'clock, and this is when they usually go over to the Otter Room, grab a coffee, and have a business meeting for an hour. And, and you can see that that wouldn't be right. Even if it's open, you wouldn't want somebody to know every day that, that they get to automatically assume that's going to be their space. Does that make sense?
They could give up their office, and just, that could be their de facto office.
Well, but if it gets reserved by someone, they won't be able to use it?
No, they wouldn't, but I guess my thought is, it's also nice to know that people can just, other people would be able to go in, and may be able to use it for whatever their needs, rather than one, one person every, you know, five days a week, they know that, yeah.
So you're talking about somebody who doesn't reserve the space, but just
Exactly.
kinda camps in their certain time of day, every day?
And that's when I, when you talked about the monopolization of the space, I think that would fall under that, that, you know, that's, it's, there's a reasonableness that has to be followed.
Okay, do you suggest that we do anything-
I don't think you need to do anything more. I think, I think because it deals with it sort of in the monopolization of it. I just think, you just want everybody to have a chance. And just because somebody is there, you know, at a particular time every day, I don't know. You know, it's one of those things, you're trying to anticipate what may be, and I have no idea what will be. And so, I just, I like the fact you've got a fair amount of flexibility here.
One thing I should have mentioned at the beginning is, this facility use policy is one piece of the puzzle. There's other pieces of the puzzle coming together, and we already have drafts of them written up. One is Jennifer Gordon's operations plan. It'll talk about the checklist of things that the maintenance workers and the facility techs will need to check and go through every day, and how the janitorial's gonna work, and how the HVAC maintenance is gonna happen, and so she's got an operations plan written up. Leslie Harris and her team have a programming plan and a marketing plan written up. And we'd like to show you those plans in July, right, Leslie? Yeah, so this is kind of the first piece of the puzzle that we're bringing you. I think it's a big piece, an important piece, so.
Okay, I thank you very much. This is an exciting thing, and I think we all ought to have our creative thinking caps on, and-
I still don't think Rob got his question answered. He wants to know the 120 days versus the six months.
Are that 12, 12 weeks versus six months?
Yeah, 12 weeks. 12 weeks, yeah, 12 weeks versus six months. I'm okay to stick with the six months, and we can always adjust it. I mean, it sounds like this policy is so flexible, you can always change it. So if it isn't working, you can make it shorter. But for now, we just want to get people in there.
So what about the limit of the once a month, though? I think that was maybe, because I brought that up, and I'm not hearing everybody say that's a great-
Again, we could go for the flexibility plan, don't set that as a limit upfront, and then if it looks like it's being abused or we're getting space, squeezing in the space.
Do you want to tell somebody that they have to cancel their 99 reservations? I would set a limit. I would absolutely set a limit, because otherwise, you're going to be in a different, you're going to be in a spot.
So, but now, as the policy stands, it's six months is the maximum they can do. So if they did every day for six months, at worst, it's, we changed the policy, and in six months, they can't keep reserving it.
So, yes. Yeah, so somebody wouldn't be able to lease it a bunch or reserve the space a bunch of times. Oh, come on, where is it?
No.
If one was to reserve the Beaver Room once, once a month, and if it was available
other times during the month, why leave it empty? Why not let the people use it more than once a month if they're, if it's available?
Yeah, that's a policy question for you guys.
Question?
Yeah.
It would be for-
Come on, I know it's in here.
About two times, how about two times a month?
Well, it's a work in progress, and we need to be thinking about it, and any good ideas ought to be considered, so.
Yeah.
We're doing something new here. And this is not the same as third-place books. It isn't a bookstore as well as-
Right.
A stage and a gathering place, more than that. Okay, next item on the agenda is staff report.
Did I, did I get guidance on-
You're not done?
Did I get, did I get guidance on resident versus non-resident?
I think we said either, to start out with.
Start out with just not and make a distinction.
Everybody for now, and then if it gets crowded, deal with it then.
Yeah.
Okay, and, you know, we'll, once we get a few months into this, we'll come back and talk to you about all the issues and if our what-ifs materialized or not.
Stacy, Councilmember Danuski?
Yeah, and as far as the once a month or not, I don't, I don't know if we need to put a firm rule in place quite yet. I could see twice a month being fine. If nobody's reserving it, I could see it a little more being fine. So I don't know if we want to put a firm thing on that in my mind, but I do see where Councilmember Sperry's going to. I certainly wouldn't want to allow anybody to do it more than once a week, or, I don't know.
But I think the schedule should have time blocked off for just open public time, like there's open swim time, swimming pools.
Yes. Yep, and it will, and that's, we didn't want to put those exact times in this policy. I feel like that's more of an administrative call. But, yeah, definitely going to have open swim times. I wish that little city near University Place would have done that. I'm just kidding.
But that would just be in the Beaver Room, right, the open swim time?
Beavers and Otters are swimming around in there, yeah. Okay, can we move on to staff reports?
Yeah, I just have one thing, and that is, the state legislature has not adopted a budget for the next biennium yet, and the deadline is looming. It's, they need to adopt one, adopt a budget before June 30th. And, and I'm reading from the AWC that the state has been communicating about its contingency plan for what would happen if a budget is not in place by the start of the fiscal year July 1st, which has never occurred before in our state. So this would be historic if they didn't have a budget in place. But I'm wondering how, I was wondering how it would affect us. Like, the state distributes state shared revenues, sales tax being one of them. And what we're being told by the state is that cities would continue to receive distributions of local taxes collected by the state from skeleton crews at the Department of Revenue and the Office of the State Treasurer. But here's one that might affect us. State parks and other state recreational sites would close. Nearly 11,000 paid camping and overnight reservation holders for the first week of July will need to be notified of park closures and reservation cancellations. Business license activity, you know, we, how the state collects, that would be suspended. And then state employees have already been given notices according to their contract terms of potential temporary layoffs. So I guess the good news is, it sounds like we would still get the state shared revenues that would be distributed to us, but it'd be interesting to see what happens at St. Edward State Park. That's all I have.
Councilmember comments, initiatives? Start with Councilmember Danuski.
Nothing to add?
Councilmember Herbig?
Nothing to add?
Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Sperry?
Art show opens Wednesday, up at Bestir.
Councilmember Smith?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. And I don't have anything, so if there's no further business for the, for the council and the city, meetings adjourned.